Okay, so welcome everyone to the August 13, 2020 Town of Monroe Planning Board Workshop Meeting. Norrie, would you please do the Planning Board Roll Call?
Bonnie Franzen.
Here.
Lisa McQuade.
Sorry, I was muted here.
Thank you. Pat Shea.
Yeah, Derek.
Don Allegro.
Here.
Jeff Manson.
Yeah.
Anthony Vaccaro.
Here.
And Jason is out.
Well, if he gets on, he gets on. We can note it.
I'll change it then.
Yep, and with that, do we have our flag? All right, everybody, let's say our pledge, I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For all.
Love it. I will point out the fire escapes. This way in my house, back there. Returning projects.
We were supposed to be in the building, that's why I put it back on.
I know, I know you did. So our first item on the agenda, and welcome all, first item on the agenda is Joel Stossel. Joel is on. Can you hear us, Joel?
Yes, just unmuted myself.
And Joel?
We should have here, I think John Locke is here.
If it's C Locke, yes.
And then we shall have the designer on, let's see. Ricky?
I see attendees. Ricky Brule?
Yes.
Okay, he is in our attendee list. So Sean will take care of that. And is that the full complement of people representing this?
I believe so.
Okay. So welcome. Joel, why don't you give us an overview of where we are and what you've submitted since the last meeting?
Sure, so we had submitted revised, revised renderings of the building. The major change was that we took off the whole round in the front of the building. We just keep it simple, just with a little bit raised parapet. And in addition to that, that's basically the major change. In addition to that, we have submitted just today a drawing to Sean that was basically a 2D drawing showing the square footage of the signage. So this will make you able to confirm that it's confirmed to code with the square footage of the signs. And I believe there was also an updated revised site plan before the last submission, which basically confirms with the slopes and with the slopes of the ramps and just finalized all the latest comments from the engineer. So with that, I hope that this is sufficient for the board and unless there is any other comments, that we shall be good for a final approval for the regular meeting.
So we'll start with our consultants, see if they have any comments, and then we'll move on to the board members. So Sean, do you want to kick it off?
Sure. To echo Joel, yes, the two comments that I had about the ramp, they being the subbase for the concrete sidewalks and the restoration of around the ramp being, they're proposing that it's grass. Those are my last two comments regarding the ramp. Those were addressed and noted on the plans as well as the signs, as Joel stated. The elevations were provided today. The square footage does meet the town code requirement that for every one foot width of building facade, there should be no more than two square feet of building sign. So that is provided in each, and in each case is less than the maximum allowed.
Okay. Ashley, do you have any comments?
No, no comments at this time. I did send to you, Bonnie, just a little while ago, a proposed resolution. I don't know whether you wanted to look at that tonight or if you want to do it on Tuesday. But if the boards, you know, already to approve the signage and all those architectural elements, then you could proceed with the resolution.
So I think my preference would be just because we received it, I'd like to carry it over to Tuesday. And that gives us an opportunity just to review the details. And if there are any conditions, something that we need to add to it, we have that chance. And it's essentially a few days away. So as far as making a decision, I really would like to wait till Tuesday. Board members, do you have comments?
I have a question and a comment. On page six of the document from Seastern, where it shows the two pictures of the signage in the front. It mentions the signage to be translucent vinyl on red acrylic backed by lighting. And I guess what I'm curious is, will the words, the phone numbers, the building number and the caduceus be lit up at night? Is that what that's trying to tell us? That it's backed by lighting and that it's translucent? Or is the entire red facade going to be lit up?
The red facade is going to be lit up.
It is?
Yeah.
And wrapping around the corner like it does?
I'm not sure if it'll wrap around the whole thing, but the red.
Along the front?
Yeah.
Okay, just trying to get some clarity there. My other, my comment is, taking a look at the site plan, there, it appears to be that there's three symbols representing the light posts that are referred to in the packet. There's a post light, basically, to be used out by the parking lot. And it looks like two on the far side of the building and then one just down from the handicap spots. This is my concern about that. In taking a look over section 57-21-6, there's a number of subsections that talk specifically about light that bleeds onto other properties. Specifically, 21-6C6 states that it shall not exceed 0.1-foot candles on adjacent business property. What I'm gathering from the spec sheet on this light post fixture is that it's an LED light and that it shines light in a 360-degree radius. Where these symbols are, for the two on the far side of the parking lot, it looks like they're virtually on the property line. And my concern is that we have an issue with the amount of light that's going to be shining onto the adjacent commercial property. But I'm hoping you're going to tell me that that's not the case, because I really like those light fixtures.
We did reduce the lumen of it, so it shouldn't necessarily be as strong.
It was reduced from the stated 2877 on the spec sheet we were given?
I think we're referring to two different things. The light poles on the site plan is the ones that it's packed on the sheet. The light poles on the site plan is basically existing light poles. We're not changing anything on the site plan. The only thing we're doing is around the building. And that's basically the specs, the light specs, is for the building lights.
So then, so then the one that's in the packet from Seastern, the one, the post light, where are those going to be located then? I just didn't see, I didn't see it appearing. The other lights that are in the packet, you can see where they're positioned on the building, but this I didn't see called out anywhere in that packet or on the site plan.
Which page is that pole light? Do we have a pole light package?
It's page seven. It says parking lot area to be lined with area LED light. Is that the one?
Yeah. Yeah.
Post top.
Page seven?
Yeah, post top 26W neutral LED type V clear lens black.
Okay, oh, I got it.
Actually, Sean, maybe you could bring it up on the screen if you have it. We're talking about the Sistern.
Yeah.
Yeah, so to be clear to the board members, we're talking about this.
So I took a look at the manufacturer's website to see if they offered any type of shielding with that or that sort of thing. Again, my concern was if those lights are positioned on the far side of the parking lot, then we've got a zoning code issue. But if they're the existing lights that are there, would you be able to? Because honestly, Joel, I forget from my visit over there what those look like. I was wondering if you could describe them for us, maybe.
I don't remember what existing looks like.
I think they're like box lights.
That were sort of mounted to the front of the pole, hanging out over the parking lot, was what I had in my memory. But I, it's been a little while since I looked at them.
They are, they are boxes. I don't have a way to share it off here, but I happen to have a photo of the building. You're referring to the ones mounted on the building right now?
Well, I think we're talking about the light posts themselves that are in the parking lot area.
Okay, I'll see if I got anything that shows that.
Jeff, did you say that there was no shielding that could be added?
Well, for the one that, for the one that they call out on page seven of this packet, from what I could find, I didn't find any, I didn't find that they offered any kind of shielding that might direct the light only on the subject property.
Actually, can you share, can I share my screen, Sean?
Yep.
All right, so I have photos here, so let me figure out.
If I could just comment on that, too, the code does require that the source of light be shielded.
Can you see the screen?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, so I'm just going to see if I can get, why is this so small? That's not it. Box here, hold on. Here we go. Is that the lighting? I think that's the lighting, right? Because here's the building and this is the handicap parking spaces next to the building, and this is the extension of the parking lot.
Can't see anything here.
Yeah, we only.
Oh, you can't?
No.
You're a photo gallery.
You're seeing the photo gallery, but not, oh, let me do this, sorry. Can you see this?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Okay, I see what's going on. So let me ask you, from Seastern, can we, is there anything that we can exchange quickly for a shielded light? Or we can just remove that from the approval package, not change that light now?
The light that's supposed to be around the parking lot, the one that we?
Yes.
Well, I think we're trying to understand was, were the light poles and posts going to be switched out? Or are the existing posts remaining and that particular detail is no longer part of the design?
See, part of the issue is our code is very specific to foot candles. And we weren't provided, and I couldn't find it on the website, for any of the fixtures, the foot candle pattern diagram that seen with other lighting fixtures, and I view past. Just trying to turn back to that, again, hoping that those fixtures would be suitable for this issue. But I couldn't find anywhere where that was available.
The shield?
No, I couldn't, I couldn't find anything that spelled out what the, everything talks about lumens, but it doesn't really give us the amount of foot candles that the light is going to put out. We don't, we don't even know.
Right, we don't have like a photometric plan that shows that, in fact, at the boundary line, that we meet the requirements of the code with regard to lighting levels. But if you're not changing the lighting, then, and I would defer to Ashley, that's kind of pre-existing. But what's unclear is because there's this new fixture that's being indicated as being mounted on a post, either it's somewhere on the plan and we don't know where, or maybe it's like by the walkway, or it's not being used because the old fixtures are being used. We just need clarification on why that detail is there and where it would be used.
So originally, we had wanted to replace these on the poles, but Joel, if they're not being replaced, then it shouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, so basically, this detail needs to be removed from the package, basically.
Yes, if you're not going to use it, then it does.
Okay.
Jeff, you have more comments?
No, honestly, that was the only concern I really had at all. Because I like the fixture, I just thought it was going to be a code violation, so.
Okay, so Ricky, I do have a question. So could you explain again how the signage, where it says the doctor's care steer health with the phone number and Williamsburg Pediatrics? Are you saying that the letters are going to be on red acrylic? And then the red acrylic itself behind the red acrylic, there's going to be lights to light up the red acrylic area?
That would probably be easier to create, to have the lighting behind the red acrylic as opposed to behind each of the letters individually. But and then have the letters to be, I'm not sure about the lighting for the lettering, though.
Okay, and the reason I ask is because if you start to light up that entire panel, does that in effect then potentially become part of the sign? You know, if we draw a radius around the letters, or sorry, you know, draw square around all the letters, as Sean said, we're meeting the requirements. But if now really the entirety of that red area is lit and it becomes part of the sign background, then now we may have an issue. So that's why we're wondering, how is it going to be lit?
So I believe that the only option is basically to light the letters only, and you want probably that noted on the rendering or something.
I mean, what I think would be nice, because I don't, you know, I don't know how you would light them. I don't know how large the letters are. Would they be backlit or we're almost talking about like box lighting where it's internal and each letter has lighting within the letter? Or would you do, or you know, the other alternative is to actually put downlighting on them. But if you do that, then I think you have to bring the doctors you trust down to be able to put fixtures to then downlight the lettering. Do you know what I'm saying?
But Bonnie?
Yep.
If, if all of the, if the words and the numbers and the caduceus were all translucent, but whatever the red acrylic material, either wasn't translucent or the padding on it that prevented it from being translucent, then it would, if you had that all backlit, then the lights, then the words and the numbers and the caduceus would light up and everything else would be a lot from light, wouldn't it?
Yeah, I think that's okay, so long as the red itself is opaque. So if the red is opaque and all we're seeing is lighting behind the letters, then I would tend to agree, that's okay. But if the red itself is translucent and you're getting a glow behind the translucent red in addition to seeing the letters, now we're talking about a different scenario. So is the intent to have, can the red be opaque, so you don't see the light through the red, but only through the letters?
Yeah.
Okay, so then I think that seems like that would work. Ashley, do you think that would work?
Yeah, I think that would work. Your code does allow for the signs to be lit. And then if they're red, because now, and maybe Sean could correct me. So the red's not considered part of the signage, is that correct? It's just part of the actual building?
In my opinion, that's the facade, yeah.
Yeah, so I think, Bonnie, as you indicated, that adding the lighting would then make that, you know, count as the sign.
Okay, so, but if it's facade and it's opaque and not translucent, then it's facade. And then we don't have to worry.
Yeah, I think that, that makes more sense.
Okay, quick question, Ricky. I'm looking at the, it's page two of the packet, and it has to do with the sign. And I just wanted to get clarification because it might just be a drafting thing. So it says the doctors and care, is it care steer?
There's an I on it. It's care steer.
Care steer, and then there's like, you know, like EKG kind of line. And then it says health. On the image that I'm looking at, above the, like, EKG sign, part of the sign, there's like some kind of white, I don't know what it is. Is it lettering or it's just part of, it's just the rendering? There's nothing above the line that's part of that EKG symbol?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, so there's nothing there?
It might be something with logo, I'm not sure.
Okay, because I see care steer line, health, but between care steer and that line, there's like light, there's like a light color in there, and I didn't know if those were actually letters. I can't make it out.
Yeah, it's the doctor's name.
Is there an image that actually shows that somewhere?
In the previous packets, before the color was changed, it was on there originally.
Okay, so there's going to be a doctor's name there?
Yeah.
Okay, and that's going to be lit up, too?
I don't think so.
Okay.
It's too small to light it up, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Out of the symbol, that's what we see.
Okay. On, okay, board members, other questions, any other comments? If you do, just raise your hand. If you don't. Pat, you touched your glasses, was that it? So I'm looking at page seven, the 501. Is that going to be internally lit or is that backlit, the 501? Of page seven of this Seastern submission.
Bonnie, could you share your screen?
Yep. So I'm referring to the 501. It says 501, address signage to be 12 inches in height and illuminated. When you say illuminated, is it backlit or is it internally lit? Or it doesn't matter to you, you just want to know preference?
It doesn't matter, no.
Okay. I like to see backlit signs, because I think the other ones look like box signs, like boxy white. But board members, do you have any strong thoughts or opinions? And preferences, anybody?
I agree with you, Bonnie, on your aesthetics.
Okay. So we'll do like backlit. Anybody feel differently? I think it looks nicer, actually. I think it looks, it just looks attractive when it's backlit. So you're okay with that, Ricky?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll just quickly scroll through these in case the board members, if anything else, you pick up. Let me start from the beginning. So this is the facade that'll be visible from the front. Is there actually going to be vegetation here? I don't, I don't think there is, right? Or are the rails there?
Yes, on the site one, there is some space for vegetation.
There will be?
Yeah.
Okay. So I think so long as it's referenced on the plan, you know, when we get it on Tuesday, just make sure that the, that the site plan is consistent if there is vegetation there. I think that would be nice if you are putting it in.
Yeah, Bonnie, it's referenced up in the upper left of the site plan.
Upper left?
It's on the site plan in the detail. And it shows that it's the.
Upper right, you said?
Upper left.
A little more, a little more to the left on the sheet.
Okay, this is the planting area.
Right.
Okay, great. So that's all this. Okay, perfect. All right, plantings. Here's a view. In terms of, is there going to, is there a curb here? Will there be a curb here?
There is a curb there.
Okay. So again, sometimes renderings are different from the site plan, so I'm just kind of going back and forth. And the parking that exists right now is not changing, right? We made that determination, there's no change to the aisles?
Correct.
Okay. Is this sign internally lit or it's, again, it's going to be downlit or backlit?
It'll be downlit or backlit.
Okay, perfect. Okay, again, the image. Black vinyl, black siding vinyl. Vertical white siding vinyl. If anybody has any comments or any reactions, and these are the details. So we'd be pulling out some of these specs that were related to the the light fixture that we're not using.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so I think unless there's any of the comments, we're going to be good to go. We know what changes have to be made for Tuesday. Ashley, if there's any changes that need to be incorporated into the resolution?
So I'll go ahead and make some changes and then circulate a new resolution before Tuesday's meeting.
Okay, anybody else have any other comments? We're good? Okay, so I think we will see you on Tuesday and we'll review the resolution and we'll take action, I think, on Tuesday.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
You, too. Right. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is DG management. And I think, I think John Kleenin is an attendee, we can bump him up.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. And Joel, are you hanging around for this one or Ricky?
No, I'm leaving.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We, we can, we can put them in the attendees.
Unfortunately, I'm not sure how to
Oda?
Yeah, well, maybe I can do it from this.
I think there's a way to do it, I, I don't know how.
I got it.
Great. So welcome.
See, everyone?
Where, where are we, John? Give us an overview.
Um, so where we left off was we were, we were discussing, I think it was in June, uh, regarding clustering versus conventional and with the clustering, open space, uh, versus not being able to ride the open space. So what I did was, I submitted to you, to the board, the conventional plan that we looked at with the 15 lots and that was eventually determined that that was the, the yield, the ultimate yield that could be.
Yep, the maximum.
Correct. And then with that, we put existing conditions and the grading utility plan for the conventional. And there was a second plan set that I submitted that was the cluster plan. Uh, we did a sketch cluster plan, uh, just to show what we envisioned the subdivision layout could be if it were clustered. Since that time, and I thought tonight was gonna be in person, I do have the drone footage and updated aerials to go over with the board if, if so be, if you want to see that tonight.
Is there a way, is there, can we have, um, or can we have John? Can that be shown via screen where you could share it?
Yeah, I can, I have it here, um, on this, on our server here, so I can, if you share, I can bring it up, if that's possible.
All right, because I know we had been holding off because we wanted to see drone footage of the site.
Yeah, actually, um, it came out pretty good. I hope everyone agrees.
Yeah, John, you should have the ability to share, uh, if you can.
Perfect, just give me, you want to see the aerial first or the drone?
Uh, why don't we see the aerial first, orient us? It might be help, it might help with them when we look at the drone footage.
So this is the map aerial that we done. Now this, um, just to orientate yourself here, this is a Rico here. This is 208 going down here. Here's the corner, here's the firehouse, and then this is the intersection with Scunny Monk. So this is the proposed village project that's going on subdivision, that's gonna bring the road to here. And then this is our property, obviously, here. Pardon the choppiness here, that was the problems with actually going directly over the lines, there were some, there were some interference. Uh, so that's why you see all these jagged edges. But this is as of two weeks ago, what the property looks like.
Is that scrub shrub there?
Yes.
Okay.
This is all basically scrub, the main bulk of the trees are, are along here, then it cuts in through here and it cuts through here, basically follows, it was like a 10 to 15 foot, I say buffer off of the property line that they didn't clear. And it runs pretty much along here, then it jumps up here, comes along here, and then you see the trees back in here. So the rest, the rest of the property was, you know, cleared and is, is pretty much heavily overgrown at this point. And then the power wells are just clear.
So that, um, southerly line where some of the trees, you said there might be a 15 foot buffer?
Yeah.
Um, are there stakes out, are there markers that show your property boundaries?
Yes, if you walk up and through there, you'll see orange construction fence, that, that is the property line.
Okay, so is that around kind of the perimeter there or just part of it?
Yep, no, it, it pretty much goes around the perimeter here, comes up here. Um, you'll lose it a little bit here because this wasn't actually cleared and then it reverts back over to here.
Okay, um, are we gonna be able to see that in the drone footage?
Um, I don't know, we'll see.
We'll see, okay.
It's pretty good, but that, this is basically the updated aerial that we, that we've gotten. And then I've taken this aerial and I have brought it into Google Earth. I don't know if you can see this. But now, basically what we did was, we made a 3D rendering of this aerial.
Okay. We're not seeing it yet, or I'm not?
No, all right, let me see, I probably have to turn off the other. Yeah. This. One second, sorry. Okay. Can everybody see?
Yeah.
All right. So everything that you see elevated is the new drone footage and what it did was it created a three dimensional, um, aerial of this area, no pun intended. And we will do is, we just rotate out. So you can see these, these are the actual heights of the trees that we shot with the drone. If you can just bear with me, I'll get you orientated, firehouse, corners right here, Scunny Monk and 208. So our proposed road, and I'll turn it on in a second, but our proposed road is going to come up through here. And then it turns and the cul-de-sac ends somewhere right in here. This, this is the line of trees I was talking about coming parallel to Rico. Then on our plan, there's that little triangular piece, that's this piece here. And then you get into the property line that comes across here and then back into that, that last area over here with the triangle. So I think it might be a little bit better. That is pretty much what the property is today. And then I will turn on, what we did was we, hopefully it works. We had overlaid the subdivision map on this. And now it's not going to work, obviously. Oh, there it is. So I don't know if that, if you can see that clearly. So if you follow, our road goes through here to the village, it ends here. We pick it up here and then we come in here, cul-de-sac, and then here are, are lots, are lots around. So the con, the conventional layout ultimately pretty much retains the vegetation that is here. We will have some clearing, obviously, here for the road, we have a stormwater management basin that was proposed here. And then there'll be some clearing for this lot back in through here. Uh, the rest of it is, yes, is open and, and brush. So just to give everybody a, a perspective of what it actually looks like today.
And so you're, but this is the conventional plan?
This is the conventional.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, is there a similar, this is great, um, it's really fantastic, um, as far as us being able to imagine the development, the layout. Um, do you have this, um, same visualization with the cluster?
Not yet, I will.
Okay, okay.
Ultimately, what the cluster does is it takes the cul-de-sac, brings it back to a point somewhere here and just basically tightens up these lots, then they go around this way. So you're retaining, you're retaining more area, open area back, you know, back along Rico. Other, and this lot obviously doesn't exist in the cluster, so you're, and the reason why we can do that is because the cluster goes from, you know, single family and we've mixed in two family. So where we have 15 individual lots in the conventional, we end up having a mix of single family, two family, to get to the 15 units in the cluster. Well, that's why we're able to shorten the road up and tighten the lots up.
Okay.
That's the same cluster layout that I, that I submitted, uh, so you have that paper format. And I can bring that up as well if you'd like.
So the, the, the vegetation that you're showing again on this image was done with the drone?
Yes.
And then you dropped it somehow into Google Earth?
Correct, so the drone, um, basically connects to Google Earth just with, uh, your latitude longitude. You then download all that coordinates and you link, we link it right into Google Earth and it superimposes it right over. I can turn it off and you'll see what Google Earth gives anyone who logs on to Google Earth.
Right.
Like that.
Right.
So that's what Google Earth is showing you today. What we've done, and it's generally the same, nothing's changed, but what it does is it actually gives you the height.
Right. So when you do it at that latitude and longitude, um, how, how do you know that that's an accurate height or that it isn't actually, um?
Because it's, it is tied into the, um, elevational datum of the property. So we went out there, we, we flew the drone from this point right here.
Okay.
And we basically referenced that point from our elevational datum and we tie that back to the Google Earth data. So it, it, the drone doesn't know, the drone just says, oh, there's an object 30 feet above the point you started at.
Right.
Once you go back and you say, okay, I'm at elevation, whatever, 600, it will then say, okay, then the tops of these trees or whatever, or this object is at 630 and that's how it, it built it.
Okay. Very good. Anybody have questions?
Can you show the overlay again, um, of the, of the conventional plan?
It just takes one, it just takes one second to load.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any particular?
I was just curious to see if there was any trees along the, um, I guess the, now it's the bottom, the, the, the north property line between the, uh, electrical lines, if, if there was a natural buffer. Or on the other side of the electrical lines.
Through here, you mean, anything?
Yes, thank you.
On the flip side?
Yeah, yeah, I just, yeah.
Yeah, now this, and you'll see, you'll see with the drone there, this is all completely wide, you know, cut through.
And does the utility company have an access road from Rico Terrace to get on to the, I mean, how would they maintain?
It's from the other end, Anthony, it's from Scunny Monk.
There's a, I call it, there's a goat path from, from here, that kind of, economy enters up here and then it kind of dies right here, it was like a little turnaround.
So is, is the utility company boxed in or they have a, um, continuous easement, we go on?
Uh, their easement extends this, this whole lane.
But it has to make a, uh, 90 degree angle to get to the back property line or where's their easement?
Their easement line, their easement line runs on, on the, I'll say the, the north side, basically paralleling the line. And then they're 100 up to Rico and then they're 150 foot, so their line is right here.
Oh, I see, okay, thank you.
Yep.
And the electrical lines, uh, physically go, what part of that, I mean, where are they?
They are physically right in the middle.
I got, okay, thank you.
John?
Yes.
So first of all, that, that's an amazing rendering, that's, that's really just what it looks like standing up on that ridge. You know, the relative tree heights and all that stuff. Uh, but, so I guess my question is, if, if we were looking at the cluster plan?
Yes.
The, what would be on the cluster, like alongside the bottoms of, uh, lot 11, 10, 9, even wrapping around to 8 before you hit the, the triangle and, and what's, uh, laid out towards possibly being the conservation easement? Certainly there are trees that would be along those lots. What kind of clearing would be required to do the conservation plan as compared to the conventional plan? Or did?
I got half that.
You broke up a little bit.
Sorry about that. And if it's my question, it would be conservation line, particularly along those lots, 8 through 11, require more clearing than doing the conventional plan?
I think you said, would it require more, um, would the cluster require more clearing than the conventional? The other, I don't know, do we have, do we have chat off? Panelists can chat, Sean?
Yes, they should be able to.
Okay, so, so Jeff, if you, if we can't hear, you can always chat too, just to throw that to us.
I think, I think I get, I think you're saying, does the cluster have any more or any less required clearing? The cluster would, would most likely have less clearing, so for instance, lots nine and 10, that they're pulled in, you know, because this cul-de-sac is moving in, it's moving into here, it's shorter, it's about 100 feet shorter. So these lots get, get pulled in, these lots get pulled in, so you would have less required clearing, you know, in this corner.
And what is the, the, it looks like maybe an excavation pit or something over to the left now that you have?
This?
Yeah.
That's a, it's a giant woodchip pile.
Okay.
Has it always been there or that's recent?
Um, it's probably been there for at least three or four years, I think.
Okay.
And ultimately, the difference between the cluster and the conventional i- is really just this area. Because we're still coming in at the same point, we're still having a row of lots here, it's just, it's just swinging up this way instead of out that way. And we're pulling in this lot too, over here.
Okay, Jeff said, would there be a way in the cluster plan to add treed areas of lots 8 to 11 to the conservation?
You mean, would there be a way to add trees to this plan?
To the conservation easement? Would there be a way in the cluster plan to add the treed areas of lots 8 to 11 to the conservation easement area?
Um, yeah, I think you could, you could add definitely trees to lots 10, 9, and 8 up to this point. Uh, I don't think you, I don't think 11, 12, 13, that area, I don't think you'd have to add any because we would retain what's here. But yeah, you could, you could add through here.
And then I, I think ultimately that's a bigger question, is the whole concept of the conservation easement area, the requirement for the 50%, um, I think that still requires some, um, determination, which, um, Ashley can speak to as far as status of that, but before we even talk about that, do we want to talk about, um, do we want to see the drone footage?
I, I hope so.
Yeah, we do.
I think we do.
I think everybody does. So let me, uh, let me bring it up. All right, now, where's my, just move everybody up here. Okay, we are starting at a point basically, let me just, there we go. So over here is 208, this is the copy center, that, that commercial building here. And the drone is set above, pretty much lot two where that, where that woodchip pile is. And I'll just, we'll start here. Obviously, we're rotating towards Scunny Monk, with 208 here in your, um, in your background.
So there's the utility easement.
Correct.
Lakes.
So if you see here, here's the utility easement, you know, running, here's the property line and there's the 150, this is the boundary for the utility here. Obviously, here are the poles. There's that woodchip pile, this is approximately the rear of lot two. And that, our proposed road would be coming in through here and then turning and ending somewhere right around in here. And this is that area of lots, um, you know, 10, 9, and 8 around, open here.
Does the, um, easement area for the utilities go all the way to the northerly property line or is there like five or 10 feet between?
It goes all, it goes property line to property line.
Okay.
And again, this, this row here. And again, this, this row here, I'd say the first, probably ten to fifteen feet or so are, is within our property and the rest is outside.
Yeah, with leaf in, you can't see.
Correct.
That, that orange silt fence.
No, no, it's probably, it's buried down in there.
Yeah. And this is obviously leaf in, so some consideration needs to be given to, because these are deciduous, if you wanted almost a year-round screen, having some additional plantings.
Correct, it's still, even when the leaves are off, you'll see, but it's also very difficult to see to the top from two oh eight Scunny Monk. Because we are, we are a little higher in elevation than everyone along the road already. So from a buffering perspective.
Yeah, I think that's what you are, yeah, because you're elevated, I think we, and that could be probably just done by cross-sections.
Yeah, well, I can go back to the, I can go back to the Google Earth as well, because what it does is it also links the drone footage to the street view.
Okay.
You'd be, you know, I can take you up a Rico Terrace and you'll be able to see the, the difference as well as the, the tree cover there.
Okay.
Here, we're just rotating around, so again, our road would be coming in here and coming over to somewhere in here with lots going around either side. And then here's that, the power line is basically just, you know, going all the way straight through. And then the drone is returning home.
Is there almost like a hump?
Yes, there's a high point back.
Right.
Back here.
Right, that looks like a hump right in there.
Yeah, the, the actual, the highest point of the property is within the easement.
Okay.
I will show it to you when we get back to, we get back to zero.
There's like three little humps in that part.
Yes. Yep, and then it's done.
Thank you.
Yep, let me just give you one more, let me just get us to a point where I can. Come on. Your highest point is right here. So that's, I think it's elevation six ninety, then there's another localized high point here. And it kind of dips a little bit, and then there's a high point over in here. And they're all, they're all pretty much right along the boundary of the easement.
Okay.
So that's, that's the property in a, in a four-minute video.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That was very informative.
As for anything else on the property, basically, we have, we have some steep slopes, little pockets of steep slopes. Majority of the steep slopes is off the property, it's along a Rico Terrace and up to the property line. And you'll, you can see that on the existing conditions plan, those areas are shaded in gray. Otherwise, there, there are no, there are no streams, there are no lakes, water sources, wetlands. Or any, anything else notable on the property, there's a few stone walls, but they're again located in the easement. That's.
So I have, I have a question with regard to, you know, that twenty-foot-wide orange rockland utility easement?
Yes, on the Rico side, yes.
What is that for? What is the purpose of it? Because that's a treed area and, and part of, my question would be, would that actually remain? Is it possible to have it cut in the future?
Well, we wouldn't cut it, it would be O N R, I think it was reserved for future construction purposes of expansion, is the way the easement is written. So, I mean, I can pull the language of it, we, we have it, and it's, it's under their control.
Yeah, because, you know, we're looking at, if it's fifteen feet or so of, of trees that remain, if it is their easement and if they were to exercise use of that easement, that's not really part of, that's not really part of something that could be considered conservation easement area. If the potential exists for the trees to be removed, from my perspective. You know, and, and while you wouldn't do it, you know, at the same time, you don't have control over what, what might happen. And, and I think one of my related questions is, was that an easement that was created at the time that this property had previously been subdivided, or is that something that has just existed for a long time?
I'm not sure, I can get you, I'll have to look up the specific deed.
Okay. Yeah, and if you could provide it to Ashley as well?
Yeah.
We'll, we'll provide it to all the board members, but, you know, Ashley can take a look at it.
Okay, that's no problem.
All right, so, um. So I do have the easement, and it was from nineteen seventy-eight.
Okay.
That, I'm not sure when the, the property was subdivided, but it does, as, you know, John had mentioned, it gives them the right to clear and all of that. So that is something that we talked about last time, and whether that land could really have any conservation value if O N R has the ability to, you know, clear, they have the utility poles and they're able to, to maintain that, so.
Right, and I, I think that's, yeah, that's true of the larger easement area plus this narrower easement area. Obviously, the larger easement area with the large utility poles is maintained. And, you know, fundamentally, is that open space? Does that count toward open space area? And so where are we in terms of process, Ashley? The terminations of open space, kind of where we go from here?
So you had adopted a resolution that directed the applicant to pursue the cluster plan as opposed to the conventional. And before then, we didn't really have this kind of fundamental discussion about the impact of that O N R easement and how that might affect the ability to meet that fifty percent open space requirement, so this board has to, you know, I guess make a decision whether that area could count and you'd have to be able to say, you know, that it has conservation value, that it has some type of historic or agricultural, some kind of scenic or natural resource value, and I think that's difficult to do, given the, the utility easement and their ability to clear. So your options are then to, you know, if you're going to pursue the cluster, there would need to have open space elsewhere, that's, doesn't include the easement area. Or if the board is inclined to go back to the conventional plan, that would be another option, that would just require a new resolution to, to modify your prior determination that you wanted the cluster to go forward.
Does any of this trigger variances or?
So that is, another option would be for the applicant to seek a area variance from, from the requirement that fifty percent be part of that open space and some lesser amount, given the existence of the O N R easement. So those are kind of your, your three options there.
Yeah, I mean, we have recognized that this is a particularly unique situation, just because of the amount of, you know, O N R easement area there. And our cluster provisions don't allow for easement areas to really be considered in terms of yield. And then there's the question of whether it is even considered open space. So I'm actually just trying to get to cluster development regulations.
This was, I think this was brushed upon before, but, John, do you think there's a, an ability for you to provide some kind of easement buffer, conservation easement buffer along the rear of cluster lots eight, nine, ten, eleven, that would preserve those, that vegetation that's there? And closer to the, the fifty percent requirement?
Yeah, well, when we get to the cluster, the, the property as a whole is nine, nine and a half acres. The easement, the areas encumbered by easements are, are just shy of four acres, it's like three point nine six acres. So when we, if you deduct the easement areas off the total acreage, you're left with, you're left with about five point five acres unencumbered. And if we applied the fifty percent open space to the nine and a half acres, we'd have to provide four point seven five acres, so it only leaves us with, you know, point seven nine acres left. So, I, you know, without, without having a, we would need a variance in the zoning board for the reduction in the fifty percent of the cluster plan that I proposed. Sean, you're a hundred percent correct, that we can provide an additional buffer around lots, you know, seven and eight on the cluster plan that are, that's in that area, but I've already proposed that, we won't get anywhere near the, the four point seven five acres.
I'm just trying to get you closer so that maybe the variance could be, you know, if, if that was the route you chose would be less.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that.
So.
Would you repeat, the third option would be to get O N R to change its position on easement requirements?
I don't, I don't know that O N R would, would do that, that would, you know, certainly be an option, but really the options would be to get a variance to reduce the fifty percent requirement, to pursue the conventional plan instead of the cluster, or to somehow find fifty percent of open space, that doesn't count the easement with the cluster, which I don't know how, how feasible that is.
So the O N R angle wasn't, wasn't an option, I, I guess I confused that.
I mean, it always, I, I guess could be, I just don't know how willing they would be to do that.
I.
Can you see, can you guys see the, can you see the regulations?
Yes.
Okay, so these are the cluster subdivision regulations, and in order to increase design flexibility, two or more contiguous parcels of land, including parcels, blah, 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 okay. Application of these provisions shall be guided by the important physical, cultural, and natural features of the particular property under review as follows. Deep slopes, freshwater wetlands, hundred-year flood plain, properties listed on the national or state register of historic places, lands containing a farm operation, significant view sheds, recreational resources and water bodies, known habitats, containing certain protected species or, or important species, unique or unusual landforms or geological, geological formations, existing or potential trails, including bikeways, hiking trails, or multi-use non-motorized routes of local, county, state, or national significance. So these are areas that one would consider as having important value from a, a cluster perspective that you'd want to preserve. And so this says, unless waived as per section B two below, planning board of the town Monroe shall require that an applicant for residential major subdivision submit to the planning board a conservation plan, conventional subdivision plan, and conceptual cluster plan. So that's what the applicant has provided. The waiver says that planning board waiver, notwithstanding anything set forth in this chapter, to the contrary, the planning board may waive, but shall not be obligated to waive the requirement of a cluster plan submission for subdivisions involving five acres or less. So it doesn't seem, unless Ashley have a different interpretation, that we can necessarily waive the cus- cluster subdivision ourselves.
Yeah, that's correct.
So.
Oh, but you, but you can at the end, the board has a way to choose.
You could choose, you could choose to, to proceed with the conventional, the board could pick the conventional versus the cluster, but that cluster plan submission, you can't waive that requirement, which they've already done anyway.
So then we go conservation value and analysis. In order to determine conservation value of the open space on a specific parcel of land, applicant shall prepare in the planning board shall review this conservation plan. Conservation value includes resources that have historic, ecological, agricultural, water resource scenic, or other natural resource values. And so again, it goes on to, you know, describe kind of consistent with what I had read before, what would be considered as having conservation value. And then three B says, planning board shall review the conservation plan and determine which resources are to be protected as open space. No less than fifty percent of the gross area of the parcel shall be set aside for conservation as part of a cluster layout. Open space is separate, and in addition to any land which the planning board deems must be set aside for active recreation pursuant to chapter A sixty-five. And then Ashley, is there a section that I should go to as far as then waiving the cluster?
So it's not that you waive the cluster, it's that you decide whether they should pursue the cluster or the conventional, so they have to submit the cluster plan always, but you don't have to always have that cluster plan be the subdivision, you could still go forward with the conventional. That's the board's decision.
Okay, and where's that? So I'm trying to find it. Just to give the.
It's under B six.
Okay, resolution here. Upon review, the preliminary conventional and the cluster subdivision plans, planning board shall advise the applicant as to which plan shall be advanced through the subdivision review process. Set forth an A sixty-five subdivision of land and/or the site plan review process pursuant to article six of the zoning chapter, for purposes of secret review, said resolution shall not be deemed an action. So that's where we, as a board, decide to decide whether or not the applicant should pursue an open space, or sorry, a cluster plan or a conventional plan. That's, that's the section, Ashley?
Yes, that's the section, and you did actually already, so you adopted a resolution setting the maximum yield and directing the applicant to proceed with the cluster, so you've already made that decision, it was again before, you know, we had these talks about the easement and the available open space, but that was the decision, so if you were to, you know, change that, then you would have to, to do a new resolution.
Okay, so from my perspective, the easement areas don't qualify as open space. Oh, the open space there is, is managed, it's utility easement area. It is treated so that vegetation won't grow there. It's not really any kind of vegetative or significant habitat. So I personally don't see those, you know, easement areas as something affording or providing value. Now, the treed area, any of the treed areas that still exist, I think, have some value. But part of the problem is a portion of that treed area is actually within an orange and rockland easement area. And there's no guarantee that those trees will remain. And so, and we can't place a conservation easement, I don't think, over it. Or if we did, orange, orange and rockland would probably, you know, not accept that as far as easement areas. So, you know, from my perspective, I think the options are, if you want to have a clustered development, it has to be clustered more to get to fifty percent. There has to be a variance from the fifty percent requirement, if it remains a cluster layout the way that it, it appears now, or, or is proposed. Or we go back to the conventional. And going back to the conventional, then, you know, there's very little as far as being able to preserve you know, anything as far as, you know, treed areas. So I don't know if those are all the options, or if I left anything out. But that, but I think fundamentally, for me, the, the easement areas aren't open space. So then, you know, and so for the applicant to meet the open space requirement, it would have to be outside of the easement areas. And certainly, you know, right now, that cluster layout can't meet that requirement, as shown. And so then what are options? What are, what are our options? And I think I've tried to lay out some of them. Any thoughts, board members? Do you need more time to think about this? Do you need more time to think about this?
If the applicant decided because they wanted to have fifteen lots. Or fifteen units or however. And so they decide to go to the conventional plan, then conceivably they could do the conventional plan and there wouldn't. There wouldn't be any requirement for open space preservation.
Correct.
So it's your decision as the planning board, what plan you want them to proceed with. So if they want. One versus the other, it's still your ultimate decision, whether you want the cluster or a conventional.
Or, or you could, there might be a middle grade, there, there are other options. One might be that. Yes, you want a cluster, you want twenty five percent of that area outside, let's say, of the. Of the easement area to be open space to protect trees. And then the applicant would have to come up with a way to be able to cluster or arrange the layout in a way that. You know, that. Objective could be met.
Justing that would require, that would be modifying the fifty percent requirement or that's not on the table.
That would be.
Modify the fifty percent requirement, the zoning board can. You would have to refer them to the zoning board.
Okay, right. So if we said, okay, we want twenty five percent, they might still require variance as Ashley stating. I know in town law, we could always make a recommendation as to whether we think, you know, that particular. Variance is reasonable. Or, you know, if they're not providing the fifty percent and they want to pursue the cluster. And we've already said that they'll pursue the cluster, then again, if, if fifty percent is not met, then it has to go off to the Z V A.
If, if I could just for one second, can we, can we just go through what maybe the board is looking to accomplish with terms of. Conservation, exactly what you're looking for, because maybe, maybe we can accommodate it in a conventional layout. Or something in between. So, you know, I'd like to just see what exactly the board is looking for in terms of conservation.
Okay. I'll start. You know, this was a, a basically a ridge top that had trees on it. It was clear cut. A lot of the value was taken away by the clear cut. And my. Preference and objective would be to ensure that vegetation is added back to the site. For purposes of providing any kind of scenic buffer and scenic view. Toward the site from, you know, other areas within the village, especially because, you know, that area is in the village more so than the town. So I see it from, I think, a scenic perspective. And by revegetating it, I also see the environmental benefit of it. So I would like to see the site, again, to some extent, revegetated.
But in terms of exactly where?
Well, that's what we have to determine. We would have to talk about, you know, where is it visible from? Again, you know, to ensure that during off leaf. You know, if it's a, if it's a thin strip of trees, that essentially you can see through, you know. You can still see homes through that thin strip of trees, then to me, it's not achieving the objective. It's, it's not just about on leaf, it's off leaf too.
Right, but you know, we are perched up on the, on the hillside there, but we're completely built around as well. So, you know, we're not totally obscure. I think our only view shed is from a Rico terrace. And you can't see up there because it's about a forty foot jump. So if, if that's, you know, we can put some more vegetation along that Rico terrace side. In the conventional plan, I have room to do that past the O N R easement. And then the, the other area that I, that I would look at would be right along behind the copy center building. That's got some trees there, we could add buffer there. And then you wouldn't see this from two oh eight or from Scunny Monk.
So the area that's behind the. Copy center?
Yes. So in the conventional layout, that'd be lots eleven through fifteen.
Right.
So right now, I can, based on the conventional layout, we could probably have a buffer there of about. Probably thirty to forty feet. So whatever is existing would remain there and then we would, we could add on to that.
Yeah, I think, you know, we have to think about now and future because. You know, as I look from two oh eight over by the copy center, certainly, from my perspective, that's a thin line. Of trees. And then, you know, we can't assume that some of the other homes where there's no control over some of the tree cutting. That vegetation won't be removed. So I think you have to look at this individually as to, again, you know. Preserving enough vegetation or adding in vegetation to ensure that it's not visible from the main locations in the village. You know, an important scenic area is not, you know, the primary roadways, the travel ways. You know, the heritage trail and it may not, and I'm not saying it is visible from any of these areas. I'm just talking about the scenic. You know, we have to assess the scenic visibility of this particular site. Because it is elevated. And, and so that's my, that's my objective. I mean, had it not been clear cut, then there would have been a desire to actually protect habitat and. You know, more of a, perhaps a forested area, but it, but it was.
Yeah, I, I still think we'd be at the same, we're at the same point because the design really wouldn't have been different. So instead of preserving the additional twenty feet, we're going to be adding that back. So basically, preserve the buffers from pretty much a Rico terrace and I'll say the copy center, Scunny Monk side so far.
Yeah, and, and for me, I, you know, I expect and I'd like to see, you know, sightlines because we have to consider this once. Any grading is done. You know, where you're cutting, where you're filling, we have to consider this from the perspective of a building actually being there and what the building height would be. You know, kind of model out and, and like I said, a combination of sightlines, I think, could do that. Again, to ensure that you're minimizing the visibility of anything that's going in there. Anybody else want to offer anything or they want to think about it?
Could there be a kind of an intermediate ground? Since the cluster does provide less. Impervious surface on the, because of the road. There was additional buffer along all those sides we, we previously talked about that are not encumbered by the. Utility easements, could that be? You know, could be considered. So basically it would be a. A conventional, but some of the lots have some, you know, two family dwellings, so the units are still at the max. Maybe less lots, but still have easements all the way around that would be protected. And, you know, obviously some trees would be proposed in those easements, but. So that there is vegetation shielding all the way around.
So I don't believe two families permit it, except if it's a cluster.
So to be able to cluster the units, to have attached housing, it has to be a cluster.
Yeah.
And then, so then if it's a cluster and they don't meet the fifty percent, then we're talking about a variance.
Right.
My take is that, you know, we got through the fifteen lots. Provision or the fifteen lot build out for, based on two things. One was granting a waiver for the cul-de-sac extension. And the other one was considering that for practical purposes. You know, you can engineering wise build it, but you know, it does require significant rock cut. And I'm wondering if the applicant would be willing to reduce the number of lots. And we pursue a variance for the class, uh, open space area for the cluster, kind of meet halfway.
That would be something I'd have to talk to the applicant about.
How many lots would they lose?
Well, you know, I was thinking something along the same lines myself, John. You know, if you're able to add any of the treat area along lots eight, nine, ten and eleven to. The protected open space, if you were able to add some vegetation back in there, particularly stuff that would be effective. See, I think your bigger view shed is not a Rico terrace, but it's, it's from two oh eight and the corner of two oh eight and Scunna Monk. When you're coming out of the village of Monroe and along two oh eight, heading towards the highway. That's where lots eight through eleven are going to be highly visible. That's the piece of the property you can see. The back end of the lots of the subdivision where you positioned the, the two families predominantly. I feel like a lot of that's hidden both by trees and topography. What. The smaller variants might be. Eleven through eight, what, what you're showing is protected behind. Seven and six would continue to be, obviously you got to subtract out for the O N R easement. Unless you can get O N R to say, yeah, that's really, that's nothing we're ever going to need and drop that, in which case it could be added back. You might have to drop lot two, but in that case, you might be able to make lot five a little bigger. And go from that being a single family to that being a two family. So then you have two families on what effectively now is three, four, five and six. Shifting three, four and five over a little bit into the lot two area. I, I think it would give you more protected open space that. We get you closer to the fifty percent that's not encumbered already. I think by agreeing to add in trees to all of that area. It would really serve the community well. And yes, I understand you would absolutely have to discuss that with your client. But I'm, I'm sort of along the lines of where Bonnie and, and Anthony are. You know, one of the things that I want to mention, and when we were looking at the drone footage, when we were looking to the east in the property, which was along the. The O N R easement where we looked across Scunna Monk Road and you can see that easement continue on. Really serves as a pathway for wildlife. Deer, I just saw a deer with two fawns up there, foxes come through there, brown bear. Sorry, black bear come through there, all from that wooded area on the far side of Scunna Monk. And they use that area as a pathway down to O N R lake. It comes across a Rico terrace. Down my neighbor's side and then across two oh eight is where their main water source is. And, and because there's so much wildlife traffic through that area, coming from the, from the woods across Scunna Monk. It, it leads me to believe that there is some value to that land, even though I understand that it's protected, you know, already under the O N R easement. I, I do feel like there is a little bit of that double penalization. You know, for the, for the property owner there.
Anybody else? I think we all at some point need to weigh in on this. And if you want to give it more thought, you know, we can carry this on to the next meeting, but really need to get planning board's reaction to, again. Cluster, Anthony has raised, you know, the comment and it is true, the maximum is. You know, whatever we determine, but through the cluster process, the number could theoretically be reduced. Not theoretically, it could be reduced to achieve the cluster objectives. There's an in-between scenario that Jeff mentioned. You know, and that Anthony has also described. And I think ultimately we have to seriously think about the realities of, again, they'll be grading on the site and what will remain. You know, even if you cluster, you know, what vegetation, what existing. Vegetation would actually remain after all is said and done. Because that's in part what we're relying on. Again, the O N R easement to some extent, that's, that's not a given. So if that disappears. You know, those trees are gone and you certainly will see probably the site for sure. I, we don't anticipate it, but it's not something that, that the owner can control or we can control. So I think we have to consider that.
I have a, I have a comment. I, I think it was interesting. What Jeff said about, you know, shifting the lines a little bit and. Adding. I think he said that you would be adding an additional. Two family. Is, is there a limitation on two family dwellings within? A cluster? Does it have to be a certain? Okay.
Now, you're, you're limited to the maximum number of dwelling units. But I think within this particular zone, you're allowed multiple dwellings. Does that sound correct, Ashley?
It does. I'm just not sure how the lot size requirement, there may be a different lot size requirement. You could reduce it, but. It may be only to a certain extent for two family versus single family, so we do check that.
The other, the other thing I want to note is on the cluster plan, we've shown ten thousand square foot lots. I believe the code allows the board discretion to set the lot area less. I believe the minimum would be seventy five hundred. So.
Yes, that's correct. It's the minimum, I believe, is seventy five hundred.
So, you know, there's. I don't know, I just, I just feel that conventionally, per the code, we've met the requirements for fifteen lots. And when we, when we come to cluster, it's, it's not the applicant's decision, it's the board's dishes, and I realize that, but. You know, I, I just don't think it's, I just don't think it's fair to, to just simply say. Lose lots, you know, lose this lot, lose that lot. When he demonstrated conventionally per the zoning that, that fifteen lots is allowable, it's doable. So I'm just hoping.
I think, I think, I think, I think this would be very easy to achieve if not for the fact that you have a major utility easement running through the property. I think that's the fundamental issue about if that, if that isn't considered open space, that, that's where the problem lies. Because if there was no utility easement there, you do have all this land to preserve and you, and you could meet your, your, you know, your fifty percent. It's, it's the, by virtue of that easement that, you know, you're clustering on a property where. You know, a good chunk of it, from my perspective, doesn't have the open space value that another property would have. It, it's, it's the uniqueness of your property.
It definitely, I just, I also think we differ on open space. Open space to me doesn't necessarily mean, you know, forested. Completely tree covered, it could just be, indeed that, just open, open space. So, you know, whether it's encumbered by an easement or not, open space doesn't know that, it's still just open and green. So in terms of that, I, I look at it also as that.
Yeah, I, I look at it as it doesn't really meet the criteria that are set forth in the cluster development regulations. So, you know, the, the thing, the items that are, are to be protected, I don't see them. I don't see this really enhancing significantly, you know, and, and protecting important resources. Which is why the, which is why the conventional subdivision is still on the table.
Correct. Easement wasn't an easement and, and the property just was what it was. We wouldn't be doing anything different in the easement, we would just, we would be out of the easement because we'd be off the high point of the property.
I don't follow you.
If, if the easement didn't exist and the property was exactly how it is today. You know. That area where the easement is would just be, we would just be considering that open space.
Yeah, but it wouldn't be maintained. It wouldn't be, you'd have a conservation easement on it. You wouldn't have a utility company spraying. You know, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have things that affect the.
A whole lot. You can traverse it, but it's not barren. It's, it's green.
It's got, it, it has, it has shrubs up until the point they decide to maintain it again, you know. You know, that there's a regular program of maintaining easements because they don't want trees to come through, you know. So at some point, there is a, there is a maintenance program.
Okay, because just under the conservation value analysis, you know, there is an area that just says, you know, large areas or contiguous, you know, forested areas.
Yeah, I think, I think that because the easement does, you know, allow them to clear it, and if even if you planted forest there, it, you know, could be cut down the next day. So I think that it's hard to say that could be forest when in fact the easement allows O and R to just clear it.
Right. I'm just saying that an open space doesn't necessarily have to be completely forested. That's
There's no way I'm gonna, sorry, there's just no way I'm gonna agree that a utility easement area for a major transmission line is considered beneficial open space for the purposes of a cluster development, for the purposes of what this was established as. So I think, so I'm not, so I'm, so I think that again, there are options here. One is to go back to conventional, one is to do something in between. One is to consider refining further the cluster to to at least maximize, again, what can be in terms of providing conservation value. But ultimately, if that utility easement is not, if it's not open space, and you can't provide 50%, and if we're going to have a cluster with two families, et cetera, then we probably need a variance. Which, you know, that the planning board could provide, you know, not endorsement, but, you know, encouragement if they favor that layout, even if it doesn't have the 50%. You know, could we look at a conventional that somehow still protects the trees? You know, I think the big issue is, do we put a conservation easement or some easement area on properties? You know, how do we maintain it? How do we ensure it remains? Again, a lot of the green area unfortunately is within another Orange and Rockland easement area. So to some extent, again, we can't rely on those trees remaining if for some reason, and I don't know why, but Orange and Rockland would need to utilize that easement to to do another transmission line.
Yeah, I, I don't know. Ultimately, I'm just, we're just looking for some direction because we've been
No, we appreciate that. We want to get this project moving.
Yeah, we've been kind of sitting here for, you know, a little while now.
That's why I'm, I'm asking the board members, this is why I'm asking the board members, sort of, where are we? What do they want to see? What are the preferences? Because we have to, we want to move this process along, so the applicant can continue forward.
I have a question. If we go back to the conventional plan, how does the easement affect, like, the lots that border the Orange and Rockland easement? I think on the conventional, they're like lots three, four. Well, even on the sub, on the cluster, it's still, like, let's say the lower numbers, two, three, and four. How, how is the easement, like, if someone were to put a fence up, can they include the easement in their backyard? Or is the easement off limits to the property owner? Like, either way, it doesn't look like anyone's going to be on it or using it.
I, I think you can, well, it's your property. You can have a barbecue on it if you want, you know. I have an easement, a power line easement going through my property and
So it doesn't affect the homeowner then?
We enjoy, we enjoy that property.
I think you have to check with O and R to determine what they allow, because the easements depend also on the type of transmission line that's going through. You know, I could tell you that once upon a time, you know, you could put gardens, or, you know, you could put certain things under easements. And then after 9/11, certainly, a lot of the utility companies really clamp down on allowing very much of anything to happen within a utility easement area. So I think we'd have to find out from O and R what they would be allowed. You know, but at, but but regardless, John, when he did his conventional plan, showed that he could meet the requirements for the lots and the lot sizes for that zoning district without considering that property. So, you know, people have viable lots if we go to the conventional plan, even if they can't use, you know, that easement area.
Okay. I don't know. It looks like the conventional plan is, you know, a better use in this situation since the easement is not going to be considered open space. How much land would you pick up if you made the lots in the cluster smaller? From the 10,000 to the 7,500 would be enough, would it be enough to make up the difference?
I don't believe so.
I think
I don't think we get there.
Yeah, I think it's, I think the question is if they do go to 7,500, or if, as Anthony or Jeff said, you know, can you do another two-family? You know, do they go from, and let's say we have to exclude the easement area, you know, will we get another, you know, will we get 10% or 20%? And, you know, I think the the real key question is what's the value of that easement? Potential easement, even if it is only 10 or 20%. If that allows for, you know, insurance, an assurance that you won't see the development up there, because you will have, you know, both preserved trees and then also added additional vegetation. You know, then there's a benefit to clustering for that very reason.
With the conventional, we can't say we want to, I don't know if it's a view shed, we just, we can't say we we want some type of perimeter.
I think you
I understand what you're saying, and it makes sense. But it doesn't look like the cluster is gonna work because of the easement, so how can we put some type of buffer so we don't see it, which is
Yeah, I think, I think the cluster, the cluster can work, but with a variance, the, I think, the way that the language is written. As far as the conventional, you know, you would have to see if the applicant could put an easement over parts of the lot. And then it becomes a question of, you know, what kind of lot are you creating if a lot of it's covered by easement to achieve the same objective? And I don't know the answer to that, you know, I'm ju, I'm just, again, thinking out loud. We'd have to see something to see whether, you know, in the conventional, by putting an easement in there, they, you know, they're able to put some meaningful vegetation in there. And and ultimately, this is all subject to seeker. And if visual impacts is a significant factor, you know, the planning board can determine that things have to be rearranged or lots have to be changed to, you know, satisfy any potential significant adverse impact that might result from constructing the development. So, you know, we haven't really yet touched upon the seeker analysis. So if a conventional subdivision, for example, was going to result in the clear cut of all those trees, and that's considered, you know, a scenic area, you know, then that's part of our seeker evaluation of how do we ensure that that, if we consider that to be a significant adverse impact, that that's mitigated. So
Well, thank you for explaining that.
Thanks, Lisa. Any other comments? I know, Pat, you're still getting up to speed.
Yeah, it's, it's a real conundrum, really. And, you know, I think we vetted all the different scenarios. You know, it is what it is in a way. I mean, the plan is the plan and I can't change that.
So, John, do you want to communicate more with your client about shifting lines or getting it clustered a bit more to preserve more of the tree areas?
I would, but I, I, at the end of the, at the end, it's, it's, it's your decision. So I, you know, I, I just don't want to waste another few more months going back and forth, and we end up going with the cluster and requiring a variance. I'd rather just rip the Band-Aid off and just move forward, per se, with with one or the other rather than back and forth with, you know, this conventional, you know what I'm saying?
Right. So, so here's my perspective. I think if you cluster, there's the ability to preserve some open space. And in particular, to preserve some areas that would ensure that the development is screened. And that you preserve some trees and you potentially would be able to add trees. I think, you know, from what Anthony and Jeff are saying, you know, you might be able to shift things around a bit so that you're, you're preserving tree areas and enhancing tree areas that are significant from, you know, a view shed perspective. So, you know, I would support allowing the cluster to get some open space to ensure that there's protection of some of these areas. You know, I'd be concerned that if we, if we pursue the conventional, that we might not be able to achieve that.
John, can I ask you a question? If you, in terms of direction and marching forward and, you know, representing your applicant, would you rather just stop pursuing the cluster and pursue a 15-lot conventional plan? I mean, is that a better direction for you, or you want to discuss this further with your applicant?
Well, no, the, from, from perspective of the planning wise, the conventional plan is, is the way to go for us, because we would need a variance. That's the, that's the, that's the, that's the complete variable there, is that variance going to the cluster throws us in to needing a variance. Whereas the conventional is, is just that. It's, it's the conventional plan per zoning. So, you know, if the board chooses the cluster, then I, I would like to get a start on that now and and, and then hopefully the board maybe would be so inclined to send a nice note to the zoning board of appeals if we were to go that route.
I, I think if we all, I think if we collectively wanted to pursue the cluster and because we saw a benefit to it, and we knew you had to go through the variance route because of it, you know, I would certainly want to, you know, explain to the ZBA why we would want to pursue a cluster. And and why we think there's benefit to it.
Then let, let's talk a little bit about what all those things are. I mean, we, we get the benefit of the the road in the, in the cluster is 100 feet short of what it is in the conventional. Is that right, John?
Yeah, but it's about 125 feet shorter.
Right. So that's that much less road, that's that much less impervious surface. In the cl, in the conventional plan, there are seven or eight of the lots will, because, especially because the road is longer and pushes it out further along the ridgeline, puts the eight houses in the view shed. The way I see it on the cluster, five of them are in the view shed. And I think you have more opportunity to preserve more trees, to add more trees in the cluster. And in the cluster, to avoid the pro drive, like, from what's along the conventional coming across Scunnamunk, it's just one more egress out on the Scunny Monk Road instead of, you've got this nice proposed road coming through the village. And in the cluster plan, all of the traffic comes through that one egress out onto Scunnamunk. I ju, I just see numerous, numerous benefits to the cluster situation. And if there's a way to do it, even though we can't achieve 50%, and even if it requires a variance, I don't see where the benefits of the conventional outweigh that, aside from, you know, the fact that we can meet the lot count. And I respect that. I understand, I understand what the developer needs to do here. You know, I'm, I'm okay with a 15-house cluster. I really am. If we, but, but of course, we don't have the authority to reduce the requirement on what's conserved. So there has to be a balance somehow, you know. The choice is go for the variance for the cluster, because I do think that the board is generally leaning that way, although they can tell me otherwise, or reworking the cluster to provide for more open space, more protected land outside of the easement. I see those as the two best solutions.
In the cluster, do you, do you have to have a mix of single-family? Or could you have, you know, let's say, seven two-family homes and and one single-family? That would make up 15?
You could do that.
So maybe you could do away with, like, I'm looking at the cluster. You could do away with the lots at the, towards the end of the cul-de-sac where the the circle is. There, you got lots five, six, and seven. I don't know how much property that would be, but
Well, that's, that's actually a good point. So, let's think about that. If you look at lot one on the cluster, is there more developable area? Let's say that wasn't part of the conservation, instead, you know, you had a two-family on lot one so that you could, again, start to cut down on, you know, having houses by six and seven, or eight. And I think, well, so, actually, let me step back. I think we need to, to talk about which of the lots are probably the most potentially visible. Because depending on really where you want to especially preserve what exists forested land and supplement it, that's going to dictate a little bit where the houses go. So for instance, if we think that, you know, it's by the, you know, the print shop, where the potential exists for things to be visible, then it may be that side of the cul-de-sac. You know, where we want to push the houses farther, you know, closer to the cul-de-sac. Instead of having, you know, two, three single families, maybe have a two-family there. Again, I think the clustering itself depends on what we're trying to preserve, especially in terms of the view shed. If we think the, the area that's vulnerable as far as visibility is, again, toward the, the print shop, then, you know, looking at lot one, which has open space on it, again, is there a way to put something, you know, a, a three-plex back there? And then again, remove and and create open space where eight and nine are. So I think there's options. And from my perspective, I think that, so if you're asking for an answer as far as conventional versus cluster, I think Jeff really especially hide it, highlighted all the additional benefits of a cluster, you know, not just me focusing on trees. And so, you know, my, my preference would be to come up with the cluster and if there is a variance, you know, indicate to the ZBA why we support that.
Yeah, no matter what, on the cluster, we'll need a variance from the 50%. We just, you just can't mathematically get there.
Yeah, no, don't, yeah, we realize that. So Jeff, you're good with the cluster, working on it some more to protect the areas that are most vulnerable and where we want to see a conservation easement?
Absolutely. And again, and, and I think if that meant adding more multi-family along what I would call the backside of the proposed road, you know, lots one through, heck, one through seven. You know, if seven was, was two, was two-family, five was two-family, lot one was three-family. I, I feel, just based on what the current topography is and what John has proposed for the grading so far, from what we've seen in the sketch, they sit far enough back from the ridgeline and behind the trees and, and they're just not sitting up enough that they're going to be seen or, or they're not going to be seen much from the significant view shed, which you're right, is in the direction of the copy center and the fire station and the mobile station. That, that, you know, will be, will be to the southwest, I guess.
So essentially lot seven through 11, we want to preserve more area there.
I, you know, I, I think so, if we think that's where the visible, that's why I was saying maybe some cross-sections or something just to ensure that it's not. You know, it'd probably be useful for us all to kind of do a little drive-by around there. Maybe off of 17M, you know, if you're by the, the rail trail, you know, is, does a potential exist for, to be visible from other places? I have, I want to show, share a screen and John, you may have absolutely no idea what, what these are. But maybe some of my board members do. This is farther along Scunnamunk. Can you see that? No, you can't see the houses? Oh, wait. Yeah, I did share. Oh, wait, hold on. Now do you see it? Are these four plexes? Because I see four meters here.
I believe so, yes.
So this is what a four-plex would be.
I thought those were three. They're tidy.
So this one has two meters. But this one has four meters, but it has two. Is that gas meters?
Yes, tho, those two are gas. Yeah, I don't know how many, I don't know. Wasn't involved. This is the one just down from us, correct?
Yeah. I think this might be in the village or else it was before our time. I don't know if it's in the village or the town, but you know, we as a board didn't work on it.
You know, this, this is in the village only because I know that the line is just down from us where we're coming in.
Right. But so even if these are twos, it's like boom, 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 you got, you have six, you have six houses right there. You know, so if you were to do two families, and I'm not, you know, I'm just giving an example of a building shape and a building form. You know, relative to lot size here. You know, envision, well, these are pretty big, so.
Those are, those are two-family houses.
They're two families?
Yes.
So now I'm trying to envision, they're pretty large to fit them in this space.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we would have that.
Large of a unit.
Yeah, because our lots. I, I don't know, we'd have to lay them out, but I, I don't think we would be that big. The applicant was really hoping for more singles.
Okay.
Than doubles because singles actually are, you know, going for much more money. And the look of the development was really single with, with the yard, you know, green.
Okay.
Rather than, you know, multi-family development.
Okay.
That's why we had like a, we just had a general mix on the cluster, but we'll, we'll see what. We'll see what we can do on this and get, get, the feeling I guess the board is deciding, you know, going towards the cluster, so. We'll rework the cluster plan and see how much open space we can get outside of the easement areas. And, and take it from there.
I don't think we would have a discussion here. I mean, I, just remind the board, we granted a waiver that allowed extension. To this subdivision. I think we've been generous in doing that. And, you know, I don't want to lose sight of that. Because I think that was a big advantage for having 15 lots here. And so that crossed with the conventional plan, I think is, you know, I'd be hard pressed to make a recommendation. That I would feel good about going to the ZBA. So I would like to see a cluster, obviously, because I want to. Preserve as much green space as possible. That's my feeling.
John or Lisa, do you want to add anything or Pat in terms of cluster versus conventional?
I, I, to me, I actually like the look of conventional because I don't mind a bigger looking yard, although. For a cluster, you, you might see more open space, so I, I mean. I don't necessarily have a preference, but it does seem like we're going towards a cluster, but I, I don't really have a preference.
You don't have a preference? You see the like benefits of both?
I ju, I just, I don't mind the bigger looking yards if you, you know, whatever the, the lot, if you were talking about 10,000 square, square foot lot. I don't think that that's a problem. People are going to maintain their property anyway, so if you have. The cluster. Cluster will sustain, I don't know if the town would maintain it. Like, I just feel like if you had 15 lots, you know that. There is going to be 15 caretakers as long as there's somebody living in the home. So I really don't mind the conventional plan.
Okay. John?
In, in principle, I'm more in favor of clustering. Because of the increased common areas, or in this case would be the easement area. I really like the idea of, you know, say, making one triplex lot and. Six duplex lots, you know, if that. But John Queen has said that's not mathematically possible right now, but if. If he needed a slight var, if the property owner needed a slight variance for that, I would. You know, in, endorse that within whatever limitations we have to say we look favorably on that as, as a board.
Thank you. Quick question, Ashley, can we have a flag lot in a cluster subdivision? Since it's a, since it's a cluster and you're allowed to have flexibility?
I believe you can, I'm just. Yeah, so regulations are prohibited unless you, the planning board approves this type of layout as part of a cluster.
Okay. Okay, so, and the reason I say that, John, is just again, getting back to lot one. You know, the way it's arranged, that if in fact that area back by lot one on your cluster. You know, again, is not visible, you know, you, you could consider potentially another house back there. Which could then eliminate a house that's, you know, you know, closer to where the print center is. So I'm throwing them, that out there. I think again, it all has to fit together, it all has to work so that, you know. You know, the lots are ranged well, you're not now opening views elsewhere, you know, that we don't want to open views that, you know, of. But to give that some consideration, that, that you can have flag lots as part of a cluster. If it's achieving our objective.
You know, that's great. That'll help.
Pat, do you have anything you want to add? Any thoughts?
I don't, although I agree with the cluster scenario, it looks best to me. But it is somewhat of a conundrum, so the definition of one.
Yeah. All right. So John, do you think you have some direction here?
Yes, I, yeah, we will, we will rework the cluster plan. We'll get, we'll see what we can get for open space and we'll take it from there and. I'll rework this, resubmit it to the board and we'll get to those updated aerials with this overlaid on it and. We'll go from there.
Okay, yeah, and I think if you want to, if, if you're uncertain, you know, if you want to do a couple of alternatives. And want to submit them for our consideration, that's fine. And I would just say, you know. I really appreciate and I think you really did a great job showing us the lay of the land, you know, doing the drone. Showing us where the vegetation is, the context of the property relative to its surroundings. I thought it was really great and I appreciate it.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you and thank you the, to the applicant. Okay. All right, guys.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank, thank you.
We will see you in the near future.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda. Is. Bevacqua?
Just fine, but so you know, you're still sharing your screen.
Oh, sorry, I thought I wasn't. Hold on, keep moving around my. Stop share, okay. Sorry about that.
All good.
So who is here representing Bevacqua, Bevacqua? Noreen?
Should be John.
John Locke?
Yeah.
Promoted John.
Okay, I see his hand, he raised his hand before. There he is. Anybody else, John?
I don't think there's anybody else.
Okay. And maybe, I, I don't think this has been in front of us for a while, so I think we need an overview. Of where we are and then maybe Sean could, do we have a digital version of the map that we could share? That'd be great. So John, why don't you give us an overview?
Okay, briefly, it is an oversized lot from a subdivision that was done many years ago. The owner has it in mind to cut it into two lots. They will have separate access points. The one lot will continue to be accessed through the existing subdivision. The other lot will be off of the. Harriman Heights Road. There are other houses pretty much in line with this on Harriman Heights Road. It's in character with the neighborhood. Through the center of the parcel, we do have some wetlands. There are easements constructed around them. We believe what we have right now is completely compliant with respect to the zoning. The issues that we were addressing concerned delineation of the wetlands and also some soil testing. And we've come back to receive your comments.
Okay, so with that then, Sean, do you want to go through some of your comments?
So I just want to piggyback on what John said, that the existing lot gets its. Road frontage via Harriman Heights and Talbot, but access is from Talbot. Once this subdivision line, this is the proposed lot line to split the two, you know, the one lot into two. Then. This lot would only gain its frontage and. Access via Talbot and unfortunately that frontage does not meet the required frontage. And therefore would make this a flag lot. Disallowed by the zoning, so that's kind of the major issue with this application. Otherwise, I have some other comments. First one being that at the last board meeting, the applicant was asked to provide the grading, drainage, limit to disturbance and. And tree survey and, and other, you know, required aspects of the subdivision plans. Harriman Heights Road is a scenic road. And therefore would have to comply with the provisions of the scenic road corridor. You know, but one of the bigger aspects of that is being able to provide the. The buffer along the road, which is to have the required front yard. The benef, the easements, there's a, there's an existing conservation easement. Kind of running through the center, it's kind of a notch shape. Here, that's one side. I believe this here, kind of following the wetlands delineation. And then there's also a drainage easement towards the front of the existing lots driveway. Both of those beneficiaries should be noted on the plan.
So, so actually go back. What is the easement area, if you could point that out again?
So there's a conservation easement area noted here. Like the, this is the meets and bounds of that easement.
Okay.
Here, and then I believe the other side of it is here. So it's kind of in the middle.
That's okay.
May run right here too, another edge. So I, I don't know who the beneficiary is, maybe John knows.
Or how it was even created or why it was created, if it was part of another subdivision.
It was created as part of the subdivision where this lot was cut out. It, it's an interesting point because, you know, you just brought up access to our proposed lot one. Well, as a practical matter, we never had any realistic use of the road frontage on Harriman Heights Road. Because this property is, got this easement right through the middle of it.
So I have a sort of a fundamental question, which would be. If there's an easement on this property, was this part, was this part of an overall subdivision? That was a cluster subdivision? And was the yield already derived from that subdivision? And can you in fact get another lot out of it? So I think we need to know what the history is of how this lot was created. By virtue of the fact that you're showing a conservation easement area at some point, you know, again. Why was it put there? Was it just a conventional subdivision and the planning board decided. At that time to put in an easement to protect wetlands or whatever's there? Or was it a requirement of some subdivision?
The subdivision is known as Orchard Hills Farms.
Okay.
I do not believe from what I see indicated on it, that it was done as a cluster. And I'm not aware of anything that would have restricted further subdivision of this lot.
Okay. So I think that's something we can research. Noreen, we'll have to see what we have in terms of files. And, and also have Ashley help us out in the research of that.
Okay, so I did look quickly, briefly, I found the subdivision map for the Orchard Hill subdivision on the county clerk's records. So it didn't seem to be a cluster to me. It does speak to the conservation easement or at least shows it. But I do definitely want to see the resolution of approval to see what, if any, conditions might be on there. One of the things I saw was that this lot was supposed to get its water service from the village of Harriman, so I don't know. You know, perhaps something in the seeker that was done for that prior subdivision or there was some, you know, approval from Harriman, I don't know then. If this lot would need its water from Harriman as well, this new lot that's being created, so that's definitely. Something that I had a question on as well. But, and Maureen, as far as the project number, it looks like I, because I went through Mike's, McDonald's files, electronic files, that is. And I think it's project number 19-1999, but I didn't have a resolution for that. But to the extent that, that helps you.
And hopefully I can find something in the old files.
Yeah, I think that would be useful. Again, we need to have the history of what was going on. Sean, did I interrupt you? Did you have additional comments?
I, I do. We're kind of on, actually I brought up water. One of my comments was on sewer. It appears that the existing lot is within the county's sewer district. Based on the tax records, so I, I'm wondering if there was any coordination done. Which would allow, you know, that the county would allow a septic even though it, you know, it is already in the sewer district.
Or does it require connection to the sewer district then? Is that the question? Okay.
And if, if the septics are allowed, typically our office witnesses the sewer, the soils testing. That's performed as part of subdivisions.
Yes.
Believe, I don't believe that was done. To my knowledge, it wasn't done. I don't think it's noted on the plan either. The house relocation notes should be added to the plans, you know, if the subdivision was pursued. We had previously recommended that the design engineer consider a larger separation well, from the existing highway, just for potential contamination from the salt that's like the highway. And then another comment about the septic. We'd like to see if there are any other septics or wells in the vicinity of these. You know, there's a well here, but you know, in the vicinity of the adjacent lots that could potentially contaminate the proposed well or that the proposed septic could contaminate another existing lot. Was referred to county planning at the last meeting and that was given the determination. And it was referred to OCDPW for the access to the lot. I, I don't believe that all those comments were addressed at this time. But that would have to go back to OCDPW for further, that's noted in their memo. And that's all I have at this point.
Okay. Ashley, do you have additional comments?
Yes. So Sean already mentioned that Harriman Heights is a scenic road, so they do need to add the buffer and those restrictions. Lot 2, that's the new lot that's being created. It looks like it has parking in the front yard and that's not allowed, so that's going to have to be relocated. We already talked about, we need the additional information about the prior subdivision. Tree plan needs to be submitted under your zoning code showing the existing trees, their type and all that. It's in section 5784. Erosion and sediment control plans and notes are required.
Is the plan, is the plan showing net acreage after steep slopes and wetlands, et cetera?
It is.
Okay.
There's a chart at the bottom. I'm trying to scroll through.
A couple other things. So erosion sediment control plans and notes. You will need the size of the house and the number of bedrooms. That's in relation to the house relocation standard notes. You'll need to go through, as with all subdivisions, whether to require wave public improvements. You'll need to address recreation fees because a new residential unit's proposed. And for purposes of SEACER, it would be an unlisted action. You would have to decide whether you wanted to do a coordinated or uncoordinated review. I think also there's a portion of the properties in the RPO district. I don't know if that's shown on the map. I don't think any developments proposed in that overlay district, but it should still be delineated if it's not.
Okay. Could you, Sean, highlight again the area with the determination of minimum lot area, the subtractions? So I would only add that when I look at our minimum lot area, section 57-21.1, it also states that steep slopes equal to or greater than 30% are not to be included. So we should just confirm that there aren't steep slopes. Again, greater than 30%. It is steeply sloping, but I don't know if we're actually making that, you know, threshold. And then it also says land encumbered by easements or other restrictions, including utility easements preventing use of such land for construction of buildings used as under development. So I think we need a determination at some point whether that conservation easement constitutes something that has to be subtracted out. And that's not to determine that this evening, but I think that's something we need to research.
And I'm kind of inclined to think that it would need to be subtracted out, Bonnie, just because you obviously can't have, or typically, you know, can't have any construction or building in a conservation easement.
Right. Okay. And you, and you still may be able to, or I'm not sure you'll be able to still meet the minimum lot area, but I think that's something that we have to, you know, you're at four acres net. Proposed Lot 2 and then 3.79 on Lot 1, and the minimum area is 3. So is there enough area to still allow you to, you know, meet the minimum lot area requirement? I think we have to look into that. And then again, I think Sean would probably just need to do spot checks and John need to do spot checks on the steep slopes. Board members, do you have any comments? No? So for this evening, Ashley, is there anything we should do or take action? Or should we wait for another plan to come back that's more refined?
That's up to you. You can declare your intent to be lead agency and type the action, decide if you want to do it coordinated or uncoordinated. I don't know whether anything that changes in the plan might add any involved agencies. So that would maybe be a reason to, to hold off. But other than that, you could start that initial SEACER process if you wanted to.
I think the one agency I'm not sure of is Orange County Sewer District. If they're going to end up being involved, if this has to tie into the sewer district. John, do you know if there's even a line? I would think there's a line going down Harriman Heights, but I don't know.
I don't believe, I don't believe there's a line in Harriman Heights Road.
Okay.
Bonnie, the DPW is already involved because of the driveway cut.
Okay. So the Orange County DPW?
Right.
Is that the same as the sewer district or that's still a separate entity?
Separate. Is it? That's a good question. You know, it's the same agency, but.
Yeah, I think it'd be a different county department for the, for the sewer, the Department of Environmental Facilities and Services, something like that.
Okay.
I think that's under Public Works, but I'm not 100% sure.
It's up at County Public Works. It's the Orange County Sewer District number one.
Under Public Works?
Yes, that's where the offices are.
Yeah, I, usually when I see lead agency reviews go out, they actually name Orange County Sewer District separately from DPW, whether that's, whether that's it. Yeah, so, so let's find out before we start with our SEACER process, because we may need a revised EAF anyway. You know, I think one of the things we need to show from an EAF perspective is just, you know, we always estimate the amount of grading that might occur. So I think, you know, whatever limits of disturbance need to be shown, if that changes. And knowing whether we're connecting into Orange County, you know, sewer district line, if we have to. I think it'd be useful to know that before we start the process.
Okay, it would, I really doubt very much that they have sewers available there because I'm looking at the subdivision plans and they all have septic systems.
Okay.
So why, why that's falling with the sewer districts, I don't, I don't know. And briefly, let me just look at something on my own plan. I'm fairly certain there are no sewer manholes on this wonderful place.
Bonnie, how would you shake out the issue with the flag lot development? As long as we're waiting for this sewer issue to be looked up.
Well, I mean, flag lots are not allowed.
Is this a deal breaker or we require a variance?
So the way the codes are, especially a rear dwelling is not allowed. So you can't have a dwelling behind another dwelling. This might, it sounds like it might be an issue with, I guess, the lot fronted or the lot with, rather, that would maybe need a variance if it was going to become non-conforming.
Yeah, it's, it's the house. And so this is also for that particular lot that's being subdivided. That's where the existing house is. And so it's coming off of Talbot. It's sitting behind, the house is at 65 and 59, or at least 65. But having, having said that, it already exists and that flag already exists. So I don't.
It's not because you have the frontage on the other side, then it's not, from that perspective anyway, behind another dwelling?
Yeah.
There's other houses on the other side.
Yeah, I'm looking at the Talbot because it's coming off of Talbot. So it's definitely sitting behind the one house on Talbot. But again, the lot that's being created is the one that fronts on Harriman. And so I don't know that we're increasing, even if it's non-conforming, that we're increasing a non-conformity if the other house is going to get access off of Harriman. So again, I think it's just something to, I think it's something we need to research for sure. What, what the process may be and whether a variance may be needed. So I don't think we know yet. Anthony, I think you asked a question?
Yep.
Yeah, I, I think we have to look into that. So I think there's a little bit more work that needs to be done. I think we need to factor in again for that lot area. Consider the conservation easement, do a little more research, and then put this back on our agenda. Okay, John?
Bonnie, I have a question with my client. I know one of the items you said you were going to research was the resolution for the approval of the subdivision. If you do find a copy of it, I'd appreciate if you can forward one over to me. We'll see if that does have an impact on it. And we'll try to be back a little sooner this time.
All right. Lisa, you had a question?
Yeah, is the flag lot, is that the existing home or are we talking about the proposed home? Where's the flag?
That's the existing home.
So if it's existing, how, like, if they're, if they were to do nothing, then it wouldn't be an issue. But because they're want to subdivide, now it becomes an issue?
Well, that's the question we're asking.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, it may not be an issue because it is existing and it may not be, but that's something we have to look into.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you, John. We will see you, you know, just let us know when you want to be back on the agenda. And then in the meantime, we'll see what we can find at Town Hall with regard to those approvals and some background for that particular lot.
Appreciate it. Can I ask one brief question?
Sure.
Just, it's, it's another matter. I'm just wondering if there's any issue with COPO and Mafia. I sort of expected that to be on tonight's meeting too, but I believe you are going to do that on Tuesday.
Yeah, we have.
Tuesday for resolution.
Okay.
Yep. Usually this is our workshop meeting and the other meeting is our regular meeting where we take action. Not that that is hard and fast, but we also had, I think, eight items or so. So you're on our, our Tuesday agenda.
Okay. Have a good evening.
Okay, thank you. All right. So I believe our last item on the agenda is Eagleview Estates in terms of applications. David, is there anybody else that we need to add to the panelists?
Hi Bonnie.
Hi David.
Hello, everyone. I believe I'm the only one.
Okay, I see three people that have been on a 1-845-783-9031, a Glenn and a Johnny CJR.
Oh, well, they're, they're part of the project.
Okay. Do you want them to be, do you want them to be panelists or do they need to be panelists?
You know, they didn't tell, let me know they were going to be on, so I'm not sure. I mean, you could ask them.
So of those of you who are attendees, you can raise your hand if you want to be a panelist and, and speak. Otherwise, if we don't see, raise your hand, then we will just continue on with David. All right, I don't see anyone raising their hands. So, okay, why don't we continue? So David, where are we?
We're at 9:45 on a Thursday.
Time to go to bed?
Thursday night, so, but first of all, it's good to see everybody. It's been a long time. I hope everybody's been well and staying healthy. And we're, it's good to see everyone. So with this project, we're back before you, since our application to the zoning board did not go as expected. They did not approve the variance that we requested regarding the permeable pavers as being counted, not counted towards lot coverage. So we're back before you with an amended application of the site plan. And what we would like to do is keep the lot that exists off of Walton Terrace separate from this application. The, the, it's a pre-existing non-conforming lot. Can be dealt with directly with the building department and for a house and a driveway to be developed there. Lot number 18-4-60, the one off of Lakes Road. We'd like to subdivide that into two lots, the, with access coming off of Lakes Road. So we provided two sketches, one showing two separate drives, one for each of the lots. And then we showed one with a shared drive going up the middle of the property line to access the two new homes. I could not find anything in the zoning code that disqualified a shared driveway. So that's why, one of the reasons why we're proposing that. That would be favored. I mean, it's more towards the center of the lot, increases the site distance along Lakes Road. Also, I believe would have less of an impact on the properties overall. We want direction from the board to get your thoughts. That's why we didn't prepare a complete set of site plan with details. We just provided the two sketches because, as you know, the applicant's been through a long process with this project. So with this amended application, we'd like to just get the board's feedback first before we continue or proceed.
So I think the first question I have, just really quickly, is, is the lot shape and the lot boundaries for the existing lot on Walton Terrace, is that, is that how it exists today?
No. The, we took that off the conventional plan. The lot, the pre, the existing lot off of Walton Terrace would be rectilinear. If you look at, actually, can I share a screen?
Yeah, or actually, I could share a screen. I have the, at least, Orange County's website up, the parcel viewer.
Oh, okay. Whatever works with the board is fine.
Yeah, let me show this. So can everyone see that? Yes? So I believe the parcel, the pre-existing parcel is this one, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So that's not the lot shape that is appearing on the two scenarios, right?
Correct, but, but we want to remain with the lot shape that's shown on the screen right now.
Okay, so this just has to be updated to reflect the pre-existing condition?
Correct.
Okay.
So David, have you talked to the building inspector about that? Because there is a provision in the town's code for developing existing non-conforming lots. But I believe it only applies if you don't own adjacent property, with the idea being that then you could, you know, modify the lots to make it conforming. So, I mean, this is, I guess, at least part adjacent. It's not directly next to you, but it's, I guess, behind it. I don't know whether that would impact your ability to develop the pre-existing non-conforming as it is.
I didn't see that in the zoning code.
I'm going to try and find the section.
And, and to answer your question directly, no, we have not talked to the building department about it yet. We're again at the preliminary stage and we'd like to, you know, just get the feedback from the board. I, I mean, that's something we definitely have to address. If it is in the zoning code, the other aspect of it is the drives. That's definitely something that we'd like to get feedback from the board and its consultants.
I don't.
I don't. Fifty-seven thirty-nine. That you could develop it with a single-family home if it's separately owned and not adjacent to any lot in the same ownership. So I just don't know whether.
This is under supplemental bulk requirements?
Yeah.
Okay. You said fifty-seven thirty-nine?
I think that's.
Ashley?
Yeah, fifty-seven thirty-nine A, undersized lots.
Subsection.
Fifty-seven thirty-nine A, okay, undersized lots. Notwithstanding the lot area, lot width and lot coverage requirements, single-family dwelling may be erected on any lot separately owned and not adjacent to any lot in the same ownership at the effective date of this chapter, provided that the aggregate width of the side yards, et cetera, et cetera. No lot should be less than fifty feet. I think there might be even another section that deals with undersized lots together with this one that we should look at. But at a minimum, yes. That would have to be something discussed with Ben. Is that the case, Ashley?
Yeah, I think we, it makes sense to get his opinion on that, just because it is, again, part, it's next to it in some fashion, the, the rear.
Right. Right, and the whole intent was that if you had lots that were next to each other and they were non-conforming, that you would, you know, develop them in a manner that would reduce the extent of non-compliance. So that was the intent. So then the question about shared driveways, I don't know that we restrict shared driveways. Ashley?
They're actually permitted because it's a scenic road, Lakes Road. You have a provision that says, you can, I'm just trying to find it now. Fifty-seven twenty-one point four. F sub-two. And that you can require shared entrances of adjoining driveways to minimize the number of curb cuts along the scenic road.
We agree.
And then where shared entrances are posed, planning board may allow driveways to be located within the required side yards.
Would that shared driveway create a private road? So is that provision F sub, F-two? Only speaking of the curb cut? And then as long as the curb cuts shared, then the driveways would have to be separate, so it doesn't create a private road?
Yeah, it's, it's talking about a shared entrance of adjoining driveways.
Road, it would just be a shared, I guess, adjoining, I guess it would be a larger, you know, kind of two driveways merged together.
Right, I think, I think they come in as one and then they can split off.
As long as there's a gap between the two, right?
Yeah, because then you're starting to get into that whole, you know, issue of, again, private roads, et cetera, which at some point we need to research. Because I just know of so many communities and maybe there, and we've had this discussion with Mark, but so many that have shared driveways that don't require that width, you know, the private driveway. So, you know, I'd like to revisit that at some point. But at least the way this scenic road section is written, is it says the planning board may require shared entrances of adjoining driveways. So, and I think frankly, I think the other Lakes Road subdivision with the six lots farther down toward Greenwood Lake, are usually shared.
Meadow Hill?
Yeah, Meadow Hill. I thought we were doing shared there.
I think we were.
Yeah. So, so the question then, David, that you're asking is, you know, which of these alternatives would be the preference? And frankly, I think you have to make some arrangement to, to allow the sharing of the driveways because we, we can't allow it as part of a scenic road. And frankly, I think that would benefit you from Orange County DPW perspective. Because they're going to want to minimize curb cuts along lakes, I'm sure. And they're probably going to tell you, you know, where it should land based on site distance, you know, and safety. But in terms of the layout, it's.
Like this, since we'll follow Ash's requirements, you know, so we'll look, we'll look that up, determine it from the road and design the site distance accordingly.
Right. So from my perspective, SK-two is fine. You know, although I think you'd have to separate the driveways as we were just discussing.
Yes.
And my only comment would be, and it's probably because of the fact that you included additional land in the existing lot on Walton Terrace. But if that land doesn't have to be included, and I think that's a question for Ben, you know, then your lots and the shape is going to change and the two houses don't have to be staggered the way they are, correct?
Correct. So it, the lots, the one lot subdivided into two meets the requirements for lot area. So basically, it's going to become two half-acre lots. And the zoning allows for third acre for fifteen thousand square feet. So we really do not need any land from the Walton Terrace lot. So again, our, we'll have to investigate that further, but the basis or the concept for this design is to leave Walton Terrace the way it is and just subdivide that lot off of Lakes Road.
Planning board members, do you have any comments with regard to either layout? Sean? Any, any concerns in addition to?
I do, if, if Ben gives the opinion that the Walton Terrace lot does have to be changed. Currently, the lot is only at fifteen thousand square feet and I don't see anywhere where the sewer is going. I, I know in the last iteration, there were four main that were taking the sewer from the, you know, proposed lots one and two out to Walton Terrace. And that easement would make the net lot area on lot sixty-one less and therefore not meet the, the area requirement.
So again, again, Walton Terrace is a pre-existing non-conforming lot. It, it will, it will remain unchanged. So even with the easement going, even with the easement going through it for a sewer, it still remains as a pre-existing non-conforming lot.
However, Ashley brought up that, that section of the code that may require you to make that lot meet.
Well, if it remains in the same ownership. So that's something I'll discuss further with the applicant.
Or it was, if it was in the same ownership at the time. So if it was a lot that was separately owned and not adjacent to any lot in the same ownership at the effective date of the chapter. So if it's been owned in the same ownership, then that's the issue. Not whether it will be in the future.
And then I, I would only also add that if there's easements on any of these lots and they have to be subtracted out or any environmental constraints, remember we have our minimum lot area provisions. And I don't know if that applies to the non-conforming lot if there are easements on it. So just something to look into.
The plan you have before you actually would satisfy the zoning code because it does satisfy the minimum lot requirements.
Right, but the point is if there isn't easement required across lot sixty-one, then the net area would be less than the required.
By the amount of the easement.
Right.
Right, so we, we would have to adjust the lot lines accordingly.
Right.
Sure. That, that's fine.
Anybody else? Any comments? Or Sean, did you have additional comments?
I do. Since this lot or the, I'm not sure if both lots are, but definitely sixty is in the watershed protection district. And therefore, the lot coverage is, the maximum required is fifteen percent, not twenty-five. Then the grading, obviously, will need to be shown. I realize this is just sketch. We'll need input from OCDPW for the curb cut or cuts on Lakes Road. And then a question about the lakefront property. You know, the, the the section of, let me share my screen. Is anything being changed with this portion of the lot?
You know, quite honestly, Sean, I, nothing's being changed, you know, with that. It would remain the own, in ownership of one of those two lots.
Okay.
Is that area included in the total lot area?
I don't think so, no.
Okay. Or again, because of the minimum lot area, if it is included, then we have to consider what is water body floodplain that gets affected out?
No, I understand completely. That's not a problem.
Okay.
And then for the, the shared access, a variance would be required for lot coverage because of the reduced required maximum amount on lot one. It's noted right now at sixteen point four and it would have to be at fifteen. Sure, that could be easily addressed somehow. We already talked about the potential private road and that would have to be some grass median in between the driveways. And then just on sketch two, the site distances aren't noted for the existing curb cut?
Yeah.
The site distances are noted for the other driveways in the other sketch, but the site distances aren't noted on, on this new curb cut, so. So it'll have to be added, but that's all I have at this time.
Thank you, Sean. Ashley, do you have additional comments?
Or I'll try to be somewhat brief. So this is a changed plan, obviously, from the cluster, so it really should be considered. I think David called it an amended plan, so you'll need to, you know, go over Seeker again, definitely, and have a new EAF just reflecting these changes and decide whether it's, you know, reaffirming your prior determination or what, but just to make a new seeker determination on whatever this new plan is going to be. We talked about the watershed protection overlay district, so the max coverage is fifteen percent or you could increase it with adequate stormwater controls, subject to the, the town engineer's input on that. For lot sixty-one, it looks like there's parking proposed in the front yard. So if that ends up being able to be developed as a pre-existing non-conforming undersized lot, that might not be an issue. But if it's not, the parking can't be located in the front yard. I don't know whether there may be a need for a freshwater wetlands permit under your town code for construction of that shared driveway if it's in a hundred feet of, of the water.
We'll have to, we'll need to see what the distance is.
And so again, Lakes Road is a scenic road, so you'll have to show the scenic buffer. Need to limit the clearing in the scenic buffer and comply with all those requirements, David. That's fifty-seven dash twenty-one point four, the scenic road requirements and.
Is, is the wetland permit, Ashley, a hundred feet? If you're within a hundred feet? Is that what you had said?
Yes, in one hundred foot wetland buffer. It's under chapter fifty-six. And whether you'd also need something from the DEC or Army Corps, I'm not sure.
I don't know that Walton Lake is a DEC. If it's Army Corps, then there's no buffer, but our own local wetland permit, if you're a hundred feet, I'm looking at a measurement that's on.
Kind of close, you might be.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking, there's a, there's a, a line that says fifty point two four feet. It says Thai and it's northern thirty-six twenty-one zero east.
The separation from the water line is shown on.
Oh, yeah, that's right, that's.
Right here, if you can see on the share.
So then it would indicate that at least your local permit requirement would be triggered.
Yeah. Yep.
I'm not sure that an Army Corps or DEC permit would be required.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure either.
And.
I think we do, I'll only, I'll only say that I think we have to do a quick visit of the site at Lakes Road, the vegetation. I don't know if I've seen any kind of wetland vegetation somewhere on the site. It wasn't a concern because it was in the conservation easement area. But we should just make a quick check of that.
Just to make sure that the, the trees are shown, consistent with the tree server requirements and especially whatever trees are going to be removed for construction of that driveway.
Board members, any thoughts, any comments with regard to the shared versus the separate driveways? Any strong feelings, one way or the other? I mean, I, I suspect that DPW is going to want a shared entrance so that, again, it limits curb cuts, I'm going to guess. And I don't have an issue with that personally.
I agree. If it's shared for the, you know, in the right-of-way part and then it splits after that, that'd be.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think in version SK-one with the separate driveways, the driveway that will be where the existing gravel driveway is, it was going to be improved, right exactly there, is gonna have a hard time achieving the sightlines necessary without running afoul of the scenic roads. Fifty-seven twenty-one point four C, where it talks about, within the scenic buffer zone, there should be no significant disturbance, including, but not limited to tree removal, clearing, grading or filling, or the building of structures except as approved by the planning board. I, I just took a look at that yesterday, the day before. And there's a lot of growth around where that driveway is right now that I think would fall into the scenic road buffer. I think in comparison, where the driveway or what might be the shared entrance to a, to separate driveways on, on SK-two just seems more feasible. It's just from a sightline perspective from, from. Just in my immediate.
Okay. Any other comments, board members?
The driveway looks like it'd be pretty steep if we joined at the property line, though, in the first twenty-five feet.
Yeah. Yeah, you have some slope shown there.
Yeah.
It almost looks like there was an old driveway or cut into that property where it's shown on the first rendering, where you have the separate driveways, the driveway for lot two. It almost looks like it comes into an area that had been graded out previously to accommodate something, you know? So we'll, I think that, so is it kind of the collective board that if there's a preference, it's SK-two because of the. I, I think that, so is it kind of the collective board that if there's a preference, it's SK-two because of the single entrance? Which splits into two driveways? Does that seem to be, uh, what everybody thinks?
I'm going to change, revise my thought on that, because, um, it looks like it's really steep over there and to put it someplace in the center, may not be achievable with, uh, tremendous cut.
Well, do we want to have David speak to the county before we go in any direction? Because really, to some extent, it's going to come down to the county, right?
Plus, there hasn't been a grading plan prepared yet, so.
Yeah. I mean, I think if we want to do the shared driveway, um, then, you know, David, we'll probably have to see what that looks like in terms of grading out to meet any driveway grades. And then I think even before that, you need to, um, get some kind of determination as per Ashley's comments with regard to that, um, pre-existing law and what's allowed to be done. Because I think to some extent, until you know that, um, you know, it's going to hard to, it's going to be hard to proceed.
Absolutely, that, that's why we here just with these sketches, to get, just get the board's feedback.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments, anything they want to add before we, uh, let, uh, David go?
I just have one more comment.
On his merry way, yes.
Before David leaves, just to, to clear up the record a little bit. So we had previously the subdivision, when it was before you went through the public hearing process, the applicant had waived that sixty-two day timeframe for making a decision from close of the public hearing. But this is really completely different plan, so I just want to have David confirm that prior application's withdrawn and we're really, this is an amended application, it's really starting that new process again. So, as I had noted, you would have to make another seeker determination and the application under the subdivision law isn't, um, complete until you have that seeker determination.
Good, we agree.
Thanks.
Yeah.
And Ashley.
We appreciate the amended application also, thank you.
So Ashley, we don't need any new paperwork for the amended application, it's just seeker and then.
Yeah, the only thing might be a new EAF, um, you know, depending if there's any changes in that, but.
Okay.
Okay, sure.
And then, just check with Noreen on fees, I don't know if an amended application needs anything, I don't know what's required, so, um, you know, Noreen will touch base on that.
I think he's good right now.
Okay. Okay. All right, so I think that's it for this evening, thank you.
Thank you, everyone, have a great evening.
Thank you, stay healthy.
Bye-bye.
All right, so with that, um, I think the next item on the agenda is uh, planning board minutes. Um, so, Ashley, uh, if you want to leave, that's okay, if you want to stay, that's okay. Um, and unfortunately for you, Sean, you have to stay, sorry.
It's all good.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, Ashley. All right, so. All right, what was the first? We have to see if everybody's available to be able to even vote. All right, so the first one's January twenty-first. So Noreen, do you have January twenty-first?
I left my folder on my desk with my, so I don't have it in front of me. And I have the computer on, so I can't access my emails at the office.
All right, so, hold on a second.
I don't know whether you want to do these on Tuesday.
Well, can you see this?
Oh yeah, now we can.
Okay. So, we had President Anthony, Lisa, myself, and John. So, I think, one, two, wait, one, two, three, four, so we can vote on this, correct?
Yes.
All right, so, um, Lisa, John, Anthony, have you had a chance to go through these minutes?
Sorry, I, this is Anthony, I haven't.
Okay. Are you going, so are you going to want to defer voting?
Uh, if that works for everybody, I'd be happy to do it that way.
Okay, so since Anthony didn't have a chance to look at this, I think we have to defer it. Um, next item. Sorry, next, uh, February thirteenth. February thirteenth. I have two twelve. Here's two.
Not enough people. Bonnie, there was, uh, Anthony, myself, Jason, and Jeff.
Okay, can't do it.
Absent, uh, you and John, so, uh, because we don't have Jason, there's not enough.
Okay. And then the last one, I think.
I don't think you have March thirtieth. I, uh, I think I deleted it by mistake.
All right, so you'll get that to us for the next meeting?
Yep, I have a couple of others I have to get to too, so we'll get them done in a couple of meetings.
You, you sent us March twelfth, though, you did send us minutes.
March twelfth is done, we did that last.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're fine, but no, March thirtieth. Um, I can't find, I went to reprint it today and it wasn't in docs, I think I forgot to save it and closed out, so I need to retype it in. That was, weren't at that meeting, that was the CCR meeting. Is that right, CCR, CRR?
Oh, yeah.
CCRC, I think.
Yeah, something like that, so you weren't at those meetings?
No.
So, we probably wouldn't. Yeah, we'd have a call, but yeah, unfortunately, I, I don't think anybody received them.
Okay.
I'll get it for next week.
Does anybody want to bring up any information or anything they'd like to, um, discuss before we adjourn the meeting? Nothing? No? Okay, we're good. All right, so I'll make a motion to adjourn our meeting, um, may I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second.
Okay, Anthony.
Anthony.
An- Anthony B. Pat. And everybody, uh, in favor of adjourning, could you just raise your hands?
Dog is too.
And the dog is too. So with that, our meeting is ended, thank you all very much. And we'll see you next, we'll see you next Tuesday. And, uh, stay healthy.
Thank you.
You too.
Today is another Zoom meeting or in person?
I think it's Zoom again.
It is Zoom because we have a public hearing that night. The continuation of eighty-one Raywood, that's not eighty-one anymore.
That's Raywood.
Raywood Drive is going to be.
Raywood something.
Right. So that's going to be another Zoom, um. I don't remember if the panelist links went out, Sean. I'll look tomorrow morning.
Okay, um, I can have Danielle resend them all, that's not a big deal.
Okay, thank you. So we'll see you all on Zoom, seven fifteen, Tuesday.
Thank you.
Good night, guys.
Good night, everybody.
Bye.